The delay. Welcome, we will call the meeting to order for the afternoon of May 25th, 2021. Tony, could you please call Rome?
President.
Prawlaz.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Osco.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Asparza. Asparza. Arenas.
Here.
Oli.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones. Cardo.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. If you're able to stand, please join us as we pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Of the United States. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You all. I know it is not gonna noticed by any of us that today is the one year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. We'll certainly be keeping him and his family and our thoughts. Today's invocation will be provided by Professor William Armelene. Councilmember Carrasco will tell us more. Welcome, Professor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Today marks the one year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. It's a very somber day. On May 25th, 2020, Minneapolis Police arrested George Floyd after a convenience store employee called 911. The employee told police that Mr. Floyd had allegedly bought cigarettes with a counterfeit $20 bill. The employee told police that Mr. I'm sorry Derrick Derrick Chauvin, one of the four officers involved in the murder, had George Floyd pinned to the ground with his knee on his neck for at least eight minutes and 15 seconds. During that time, George Floyd was heard telling the world, "I can't breathe. I can't breathe." It was a moment in time that the world witnessed and that will forever be etched in the collective consciousness of our minds. Later, George Floyd was found unconscious, showing no signs of life. George Floyd was a devoted father, an artist. He was a brother. He was a son. And he deserved to be treated with dignity and respect. Much of what is usually afforded to individuals who don't look like him. George Floyd was much more than what was captured in that moment in time. And when he cried out to his mother, many of us who are mothers heard that call. His murder sparked a civil unrest not seen since the Civil Rights Marches of the 1960s. The murder of George Floyd is a brutal recognition that racism, environmental justices, redlining, and other social inequalities still exist and disproportionately affect our Black and Brown communities. Our struggles are interconnected. And to embrace the Black Lives Matter movement is to stand against systemic racism, violence, and brutality. We have been witnesses to the possibilities of change when we are confronted by injustice. We saw it. We felt it. We grieved it. We collectively cried for George Floyd. We cried for Angelo Quinto, Breonna Taylor, Dominic Fels, Andre Maurice Hill, and locally Antonio Guzman, Diana Shomen, Richard Harpojquez, Efrain Esquivel, David Tovar, and so many other souls that have been also lost. But 365 days later, little has changed. Just a few weeks ago, we witnessed the murder of Dante Demetrius Wright, who in his final moments, before his death, he called out to his mother. A little six-year-old Latina child was spanked for breaking a computer. And as a mother, I'm still teaching my Latino son what kind of precautions he needs to take every time he leaves my home. If we're going to make changes, we have to challenge our own unconscious bias and consistently advocate on behalf of those whose voices have been systematically absent from the decision-making process. So it is timely and it is with great pleasure that I introduce Dr. William, or as many of you know him, Bill Armelene, as our indicator today. Dr. Armelene is the founding director of the Human Rights Program and an associate professor in the Department of Sociology and Interdisciplinary Social Sciences at San Jose State University. His formal training spans sociology, education, and human rights. As an interdisciplinary scholar and public intellectual, Dr. Armelene's interests, applied work, and scholarly publications address social problems related to political economy, environmental sustainability, racism, anti-racist actions, critical pedagogy and transformative education, inequality, and youth mass incarceration and drug policy reform. I have personally worked with Dr. Armelene on creating a strong cannabis equity program here in the city of San Jose. Cannabis equity programs seek to provide opportunities for those disproportionately who have been arrested, incarcerated, or otherwise impacted by previous cannabis policies to have access to employment and entrepreneurship opportunities in the cannabis industry. He's my biggest partner in this fight against the war on drugs. Dr. Armelene has been at the forefront on drug policy reform and on housing and homelessness, immigrant rights, and democratic eco-socialism. And has written two books on human rights in our own backyard, Injustice and Resistance in the United States and The Human Rights Enterprise: Political Sociology, State Power, and Social Movements. It's such a great pleasure to have you here, Dr. Armelene, and looking forward to your inspirational words. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco, and thank you to all the council members and community members here today. I prepared a few comments just as asked to give us an idea of sort of the status of the movement on this sort of solemn anniversary. So it is, in fact, my solemn honor to give today's invocation on the first anniversary of the police murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota. His murder and the murder of many other victims like Breonna Taylor inspired the reemergence of the Black Lives Matter movement that began in 2013 and in 2020 resurfaced as a summer wave of liberal protests, including some of the largest in U.S. history. As you also know, San Jose was one of many homes to this protest movement, resulting in our own public displays of rebellion over racist police violence that were met by more police violence that is now the subject of civil suits. Not unlike the pleas of Eric Garner in New York, who simply begged for who simply begged for air, gasping, quote, "I can't breathe" as officers strangled him, the cold indifference shown to George Floyd by the police who tortured and killed him over an excruciating nine minutes and 29 seconds as he begged for his life and called for his mother, captured and haunts the minds of millions across the world. It demonstrated what scholar Kyanga Yamada-Taylor called the, quote, "callous disregard for Black life." And more importantly, the inverted power relationship between the police as an institution and the everyday people who literally pay for their existence and whose compliance is necessary to legitimize the state monopoly on the use of force, their right to detain, cage, kill, and surveil other people under the license of the state. Perhaps nowhere was this made more evident than in the burning down of Minneapolis Third Police Station, also called a, quote, "playground for renegade cops" by local residents for years. There is a danger in focusing on these viral and celebrated cases, however, in that one can lose sight of the shocking regularity of police violence toward the real or perceived enemies of the powerful since the inception of policing itself. Indeed, police in the U.S. kill approximately 1,000 people a year, far out of pace with the rest of the, quote-unquote, "industrialized world", and have killed at least 1,068 people since the murder of George Floyd a year ago. This includes members of our own communities, as already mentioned, like 27-year-old David Tovar, an unarmed man shot and killed by SJPD in January. On average, police kill about three people a day in this country. And from 2015 to 2020, San Jose PD led the Bay Area with 19 of such fatal encounters with zero prosecutions. While victims of police violence are almost universally working-class people and poor people, Black Americans continue to be three times as likely as their white counterparts to be killed by police, all other variables control. Fewer than 2%, it's actually what 1.7% in fact, of officers who kill are actually ever charged with a crime. Despite the persistence of violence in the United, I'm sorry, despite the persistence of police violence in the United States, the protest movement since George Floyd's death is now beginning to show fruit in cases of police reform and a partial defunding of police in favor of other investments in public safety and community safety. For example, at least 25 cities have decided to remove police from public schools. San Francisco officials pledged to divest $120 million from police over two years. It will be invested in healthcare and workforce development. And Austin shifted $20 million from the police budget to invest in a variety of community needs related to the COVID pandemic, poverty, and homelessness. While San Jose has done very little in the way of change since the explosion of protests last summer, opportunities remain for immediate reform of certain use of force practices or the transparency of police contract bargaining, for example, and for larger structural reforms that would shift investment from policing to other proven methods of providing public safety. This includes, but it's not limited to, the development of alternative emergency response teams or community health clinics, as we've seen in many other communities across the country with great success. But to close, I would urge us to peer deeply into this problem. In doing so, one finds extreme and unyielding inequality, the precarity that defines the lives of so many of our fellow residents, and a public institution of policing that, not unlike our other institutions in our region, serve the interests of the wealthy, powerful, and some of those in their service. This is only unique to San Jose in its extremes as members of the billionaire class and those in their favor literally drive and walk by one of the largest, most persistent homeless crises in the nation on a daily basis. Any attempt at police reform or, quote, "reimagining" public safety must confront this defining feature of our city. My colleagues and I at the HRI and NLP remain committed to this task and hope that we might realize meaningful social change as a result. And I genuinely thank you so much for this invitation to speak and for this few minutes of your time. It's very meaningful for me and for my colleagues to have the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Armelene, and we look forward to our continued partnership and work. You are you are a true partner as we move forward in the city of San Jose. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's move to orders of the day. We're going to adjourn today's meeting in memory of George Floyd. Does anyone on the council, if he changes the agenda, I'd recommend we defer item 4.1, that's articulated in memorandum. And we return to that in June. Are there any other changes or motions?
Motion to approve with the addition of deferring 4.1.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrasco, did you want to speak any further on the adjournment?
No, I am just going to introduce Pastor Reynolds. Whenever you're ready.
Please, please do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, Pastor.
Welcome Pastor Reynolds. Pastor Jason Reynolds is the senior pastor of Emmanuel Baptist Church located in our beautiful east side of San Jose. And I have to tell you what a blessing Emmanuel Baptist Church has been. It's helped us test our residents, and now it is helping to vaccinate one of our hardest-hit communities. Since arriving at Emmanuel in 2012, Pastor Jason Reynolds has helped to visualize the ministry by redeveloping the worship service format, creating new ministry opportunities, engaging young families, and successfully renovating the Worship Center. Driven by his dedication to evangelism, Pastor Jason Reynolds has led innovative projects, creating an effort to fulfill both the spiritual and physical needs of the community. Some of these projects include the Labor Day Gas Buydown, Three and Three Pentecost Worship Service at Santa Clara Convention Center, and the Emmanuel Cares. Pastor Reynolds has received multiple awards and recognitions for his leadership from a variety of organizations such as the California Legislature Assembly and the African-American Community Service Agency. He is very active in his surrounding community, being a member of the Community Advisory Board to the Chief of Police in San Jose, and has been a community trainer for the San Jose Police Department on procedural justice. And in 2014, he was a founding member of an interfaith group of clergy and laypeople called Claiming the Beloved Community to improve the relationships and accountability of local law enforcement. Within this group, he meets with the mayor, the chief of police, the independent police auditor, the NAACP, pact, and multiple faith traditions to collaboratively create solutions for the city of San Jose. And in 2018, Pastor Reynolds became an adjunct professor at Evergreen Valley College in the Philosophy Department, teaching Intro to Ethics, helping to inspire and guide young adults. Thank you so much, Pastor Reynolds, for your leadership in our beautiful city of San Jose, and of course, for being here on such a somber occasion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco. Thank you for this invitation to Rosalyn, who extended it to Mayor, to all of you, to SJPD members, to which I've worked with. I see you all here. And I won't belabor the point by recounting the story of George Floyd, although I do think that it is important. But I will tell my personal engagement. A year ago, May 25th, I had the opportunity to watch the video, not knowing what I would see. Family was close, my boys and my wife. And I remember her sobbing and me not being able to control it. I remember my young boys looking to me, asking me the questions, knowing the work that I do, "Dad, how, why is this?" or "What's really going on? Why would this happen?" And I also remember that very same day getting, or two days later, actually getting a phone call from then-Chief Eddie Garcia to come and speak to SJPD cadets as they were going in. The emotions were high. I took my boys with me to have this engagement, not because I wanted a photo op, but because I was hoping, hoping that we could create something different. And so on May 29th, which happened to be my birthday, I went in and I let everyone know the pain that videos and occurrences like this create for the African-American community in particular. But we are not the only ones. We know the challenges. And with something this audacious, nine minutes of someone asking for a basic necessity, "Can I breathe?" Is a microcosm for so many other communities that we have watched, asking for a basic necessity. Now, I think we would be remiss to leave this strictly in law enforcement. I've worked with SJPD and I appreciate a variety of the measures and policies, the reforms that they have done. But it's so much bigger than that. It's so much bigger than Derek Chauvin's knee and his neck. But it's all the factors that led to that moment. Factors dealing with mental health and addiction, factors dealing with poverty and homelessness, the factors dealing not just with racism, but the way that we see African-American men in particular. And the same thing that now a year, 365 days removed, when we look at what we could do. If we're honest, there's still so much left on the table. I appreciate the resolutions and the decisions to try to ban rubber bullets, but that was small, and even that didn't pass. I appreciate the idea of expanding the IPA, but if we're honest, that was been in the works for years. We have been advocating for that, at least since 2016. I appreciate all of the work, even the move for the POA to allow for greater expansion in the IPA and for differences as it relates to arbitration. These are all wonderful. But comparatively, they're small. And when we say things like reimagine, when we say and we speak to the heart of people that have been hurting, we have to move beyond the small drips that we hope will just pacify. But you all are in position today to do and bring to communities who have been thirsting and hungering something amazing. Now, I'm not in your position, and that's a gift. I get to be a pastor. I get to be on the side. I get to communicate. But you are in position, and you're elected for this very reason, because people trusted that when difficult things came, that you could respond. And not just respond how we always respond. If we truly desire to reimagine, then we have to be willing to put things on the table that maybe we have never done before, that people may not fully understand initially. I'll say it to you like this as I close. I was thinking about doing some renovations to our house. And like many other folks, you know, when you do renovations, sometimes they're so costly, there's so much. You decide just to kind of do them, small little piece here and there, hoping that by the time you get down the line, everything is put together. Everything is exactly as you desire. Then 10, 15 years later, if any of you are like me, there are so many undone projects, so many wonderful starts and not full finishes. And then you have to go someplace else that has already done it. Well, that's what my concern is, is that as we start reimagining that we'll be just like that. We'll start a lot of these small little projects trying to drip in change as opposed to ripping off the Band-Aid, fully renovating what we need to do and allowing it to be so. Reimagining doesn't mean that SJPD is bad, no. But it could mean that SJPD is continuing to lead. And as Chief Mata takes the helm, he's a Chicago man. I always have love for those who come from Chicago. I really hope that we lead differently. It can't just be training, especially when a community trainer is one of those injured in the process. God bless you, and I'm hoping to see the change we need.
Thank you, Pastor. Pastor Jason, I always appreciate your insights. And we are committed to working with you and with the community, so thank you. All right. There has been a motion on orders of the day. Let's vote now.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Prawlaz.
Yes.
Cohen.
Hi.
Carrasco.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Asparza. Arenas.
Yes.
Oli.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Hi.
Cardo.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, on the closed session report, Nora.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have anything to report out of closed session today.
Thank you. On the consent calendar, I know Councilmember Prawls would like to pull 2.12, which is Approval Stroke Awareness Month. Are there other items to be pulled on consent? Okay, let's go to item 2.12, Councilmember Prawls.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor, and apologize we got here rather quickly. I wanted to change my background and invite my colleagues to do so as well. We sent over the background. If you don't mind, give me a second here.
Magic of Zoom screens.
Yes, magic of Zoom screens. And thank you very much. And so it's my pleasure to be able to recognize the month of May as Stroke Awareness Month here in the city of San Jose. Stroke Awareness Month is focused on bringing community awareness to the importance of understanding the warning signs of a stroke and the actions that could help save a life. It also highlights the importance of preventative measures that can help reduce the risk of a stroke. Stroke is the number-one cause of adult disability in the United States and kills nearly 129,000 Americans every year, making it the fifth-leading cause of death. One out of five Americans will suffer a stroke, and more than 3,000 strokes occur each year in Santa Clara County alone. The Stroke Awareness Foundation has made it their mission to provide improved community awareness and better-prepared families. They've created educational resources that are now available in five languages and have continued to push the importance of knowing the signs to save a life. As a Stroke Awareness Foundation lifesaving ambassador, it is important to know that if you or someone you know is experiencing the following symptoms, it is crucial to take action and call 911 or get them to a hospital or clinic as soon as possible. And those include sudden lack of balance, blurred vision, sudden numbness or drooping on one side of the face, numbness in one of your arms, or sudden speech troubles are all signs to look out for. Today, a stroke is largely treatable if a stroke victim arrives at the hospital in time. It is important to act fast when you notice these symptoms. And I'll say from personal experience, if those of you know, earlier this year, I suffered from Bell's palsy and actually did get blurred vision and a sudden droopiness on one side of my face and was very nervous that it could very well be the onset of a stroke and immediately asked my wife to take me to the emergency room. And we were fortunate that it was not a stroke, but certainly quite a scare. And for those individuals that may experience any of those symptoms, it is important that you get to a hospital as soon as possible because the lifesaving treatment that is there can absolutely help and save your life. To learn more about stroke symptoms and what you can do to help, you can visit www strokinginfo.org. And Mayor, I believe we have Bill Barron from the Stroke Awareness Foundation, who is here and would like to say a few words.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bill, welcome.
Hello, Mayor. On behalf of the Stroke Awareness Foundation, thank you, Councilmember Prawlaz, for the introduction and for the recognition of the organization. And thank you, Council, for taking a few moments to learn just a little bit more about stroke. And our thanks to both Councilmember Prawlaz and Councilmember Asparza for becoming SAF lifesaving ambassadors. As Councilmember Prawlaz stated, stroke is the leading cause of disability and fifth-leading cause of death. Stroke occurs when a blood vessel carrying oxygenated blood and nutrients to the brain is blocked by clot, about 80% of stroke cases, or a blood vessel ruptures, roughly 20% of stroke cases. In either case, the brain is robbed of what it needs to function. The result, brain cells die, and they die rapidly. Leading causes of stroke include excess stress, poor diet, lack of exercise, diabetes, high blood pressure, and high cholesterol. And stroke isn't discriminatory. It doesn't care about your age, gender, race, religion, or your politics. Stroke can be devastating, but as the council member noted, stroke is also largely treatable if quick action is taken at the onset of symptoms. And that's the really important thing to know. Since our founding in 2002, Stroke Awareness Foundation has advocated for the establishment of stroke-certified hospitals in our community. In 2002, we had none. Today, every single hospital in our county are stroke-certified with four advanced levels of stroke care. SAF has also raised and spent nearly $5 million in public education to better build a healthier community, which has in part led to a dramatic increase of stroke victims arriving at local hospitals more quickly and an equally dramatic increase in the use of TPA, better known as the clot-busting drug, due in part to a stroke victim's timely hospital arrival. And when 80% of your stroke cases are clot-associated, the clot-busting drug is a very important thing. So all good, but we can do more. And commencing in 2020, SAF launched a multilingual awareness campaign now in five languages, English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, both Mandarin and Cantonese, and Tagalog. We'll soon be at seven with the addition of Hindi and Japanese. We've entered a two-year partnership with Regional Medical Center to expand stroke awareness within their richly diverse service area. We've launched stroke-focused partnerships with community health-based organizations. And as the council member noted, established a new SAF lifesaving ambassador program. 16 ambassadors strong and counting. Ambassadors create their own stroke awareness videos and post on social media platforms in a variety of languages. Since launched late last fall, over 15,000 video views have occurred. Since launched late last fall, over 15,000 video views have occurred within our community. In closing, let me just simply restate what Councilmember Prawls shared. Remember, time is brain in the case of stroke. The leading stroke system symptoms by acronym can be remembered as BFAST. B for balance. Do you have sudden balance or coordination problems? E for eyes. Do you have sudden blurred vision? F for face. Does one side of your face suddenly droop? A for arm. Does one arm suddenly become limp? S for speech. Do you suddenly slur your words? T for time. In the event you experience any one or more of these symptoms, please call 911 immediately. Know the signs, save a life. And to learn more, please visit strokinginfo.org. Thank you so much for the opportunity on this National Stroke Awareness Month.
Thank you Bill.
And thank you Mayor, and I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
I just want to thank Bill Barron and many others at the Stroke Awareness Foundation, those who helped to create the foundation. I know Bill's been deeply involved at Chuck Tennis Getter, late Pat Dando, and many others who have done so much to save lives here in our county, which is now well ahead of the rest of the country in creating ensuring that stroke units are in key locations throughout the county. My own mother was saved by one, and so I'm very grateful for their work. Councilmember Prawls, was that motion as to the entire contingent?
I apologize. Yeah, I'll include the entire contingent.
Great, thank you. Mr. Beekman?
Hi, thank you. I wanted to speak on item 2.10 about various apart. I had a real nice speech planned about this time of reimagine, how we can consider things. I'll mail it and possibly put it public record, thank you. The current 60-plus shot spotter speakers that line the entire various apart station as part of the improvement process to consider at this time. Although trying to work towards security and architectural inclusionist can also be considered, I feel, as possibly appalling, overrated, and way over common. It's the situation. This is not so much the ideas of reimagine and better ideas of equity worth considering at this time. Although we have allowed eavesdropping technology at this time in our society, I feel this means that we should use the technology sparingly and minimally. Five to 10 shot spotter eavesdropper speakers could easily do the same job as the current 60-plus. Please be rethinking about this issue and how to make appropriate changes in the near future. And note how obviously good, well reasoned, and decent it will feel. To conclude, the future various apart station area does not have to be built as a national security state. I would prefer the current flea market to be left as it is. But it will be, if it will be developed, please learn the process of vendor union, how the vendor union and vendors themselves can make decisions in what the future development will look like and function of the flea market. They can offer examples that can be more organic, breathable, and relaxed. And this can allow more of the spirit of the initial flea market that has been such a vital part of San Jose history. With 18 seconds left, you know, there's a few other items about technology on your consent calendar today. You know, just a reminder that, you know, open public policies and notification processes, it should work hand in hand with the digital divide issues and help bridge things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, returning to council. No, I'm sorry. Dave? Welcome. Do you want to speak on consent?
Yes, thank you. I just, I wanted to thank you for moving forward with item 2.9, the Singleton Crossing Improvement Over Coyote Creek. It really is extremely low hanging fruit in that it's quite inexpensive and is probably the single most beneficial thing we can do in the South Bay for our salmon and steelhead habitat. The Singleton Crossing is just a dead end that may possibly have already caused the extirpation of the steelhead in Coyote Creek. You know, after thousands and thousands of years, it may be about five years too late. But hopefully I'm wrong. And certainly with the improvements, you know, there's likely to be recolonization of the stream. And so again, I'm referring to salmon and steelhead that you know, spawn in our streams and go out to the ocean and it's really quite an impressive, you know, active nature that, you know, if we do a little to improve the habitat, it really can be fantastic to see these large fish and something that, you know, the community could really celebrate once we get healthy habitat. So thank you for moving forward with that. It really is going to be very beneficial. Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you. Catherine Hedges?
Thank you very much Mayor Licardo and the council. I just wanted to second everything the last two speakers said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, returning to council now, let's vote on Councilmember Prawls's motion.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Parala?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza? Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3.1 is the report of the city manager. Dave?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. I have no report today.
Thanks Dave. 3.3 is the approval issuance of tax exempt multifamily housing revenue note and loan. The proceeds thereof approving related documents for the Emmanuel Sobrato Community Project. There is no presentation. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Vice Mayor Brad Neal, welcome. Brad, we're not able to hear you right now. He put his hand down? Okay. All right, let's return then. Maybe a problem with your device Brad, but your hands down, so I'm assuming you don't wish to speak on this item. So coming back to this item, we do have a motion from the vice mayor. Is there any comment? All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Parala?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe? Davis?
Yes.
Esparza? Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3.4 is also an approval of multifamily housing revenue note and loan relating to the Blossom Hill Senior Apartments project. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. Just very quickly, just very excited to see this moving forward. I want to thank Charities Housing for all the work that they've done. I also wanted to, I asked someone from Housing, I see Rachel's on the call. Rachel, someone from my team, I think likely reached out. We noticed that the term of the vouchers was a little different on this project as compared to the previous project. Can you remind me, was there just an error in the report or? And I think, I think I'm not sure if anyone's on, but anyone from Housing?
I see Rachel there, but she's not picking up. Maybe we can look back with you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just wanted, I think, I think my team told me that there was an error, but I just wanted to confirm.
This is Dave, Councilmember, this is Julia. There is a supplemental memo.
Ah, I didn't get a chance to see that.
Correct length of the vouchers is 20 years.
Okay, wonderful, yeah.
I think it just came out today. We apologize for the lateness.
Oh, no, it's okay. I just wanted to confirm, just because I did notice a difference and was curious as to why, but okay, wonderful, thank you.
So we have that clarification in that supplemental.
All right, great. Now move approval if we haven't done so already. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this Blossom Hill Senior Apartments project? All right, let's vote then.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Parala?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe? Roscoe? Davis?
Aye.
Sparza? Was that? Roscoe?
Aye.
Got it. And then yes from Davis. Esparza? Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item 3.5 is the imperfect foods resolution. This is a memorandum, I believe, from councilmembers Jimenez and Parala's. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. This came before rules and passed unanimously. It really is just a resolution supporting the workers' right to negotiate a fair contract with imperfect foods. Who, you know, I've come to understand, haven't necessarily been willing to come to the table and such. So I know obviously, you know, we're not necessarily involving ourselves in the negotiations, but this is just a public statement of support, supporting the workers as they move forward, trying to negotiate a fair contract. That's all it is. So I'll move approval.
Okay.
Motion from Councilmember Jimenez, second from Councilmember Arenas. Councilmember Arenas, could you tell us more? I've read the memorandum, but I don't know much or understand much about this. Could you help us understand?
Let me pull up some of my notes. Certainly talked about this during the Rules Committee, but I know you're not on there. So initially what happened was that there was a vote by the workers to unionize and that vote was, that vote passed. And then I think Imperfect Foods, what they did is they, they had some objections to that, but soon after we submitted the memo to the Rules Committee, the National Labor Relations Board actually sided with the workers, saying that the vote was fair and that, you know, things can move forward. And so that's why essentially the resolution shifted from supporting the workers' right to unionize to supporting the workers' right to a fair contract. And part of it is that Imperfect Foods, in the eyes of many, have really shown an unwillingness to really come to the table and really be fair sort of, you know, negotiating fairly with the workers as it's seen by some votes. And so that's all it was, and that's what was happening.
Councilmember Jimenez, just to understand better, so with the NLRB rulings, that mean there is now a union or it's still to be determined?
That, my understanding is that that means that there is now a union and so they're in the process of negotiating a contract.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, so the NLRB sided with the workers.
All right.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? Go to members of the public, any members of the public like to speak on this item 3.5, which is the imperfect foods resolution. We have Claire Courtney, welcome.
Yes, hello. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Claire Courtney and I am an organizer with UFCW Local 5, the union working alongside these drivers at Imperfect Foods to unionize. And yes, it is true, they did successfully win after a long organizing process. They did win union representation, even facing anti-union consultants and challenges to the election that were, you know, based on no evidence. But now we know that we are facing the uphill battle, which is contract negotiations with Imperfect Foods. And if our organizing process has taught us anything, bargaining is going to be long and difficult. And we are still waiting to hear back from the company about bargaining dates. And these drivers deserve a strong, fair contract after working tirelessly for the last year during a pandemic, serving our communities, specifically in San Jose. So the drivers and UFCW Local 5 would love nothing more than to have the support of our elected officials as we go to the bargaining table and begin to ask for the wage increases and healthcare benefits that these workers so much so deserve. And just having this resolution pass will send a message to the drivers that, you know, you all acknowledge the incredible work they've been doing and that you also expect that employers in your community sit down and negotiate with their employees when they win a union election. But thank you for considering this. And I know many drivers wanted to get on today, but they are out working long, long hours delivering throughout the Bay Area. But thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Returning to the council. I'm sorry, John Gomez, you also raise your hand. Welcome John.
Thank you Council and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Gomez. I'm a member and representative of UFCW Local 5. And I did just want to speak today in support of the imperfect foods resolution. You know, as my colleague mentioned, you know, with the long, long tiring campaign with, you know, looking at more, more of that coming up in negotiations. This resolution, you know, would go a long ways in showing support for these drivers and their efforts to organize and have a larger voice in their workplace. So again, you know, I just want to show my support and ask that the council pass the resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Returning to the council now. Catherine Hedges?
Thank you very much Mayor Licardo and I also want to support the imperfect foods unionization. The drivers have a very hard job and they should have you in your presentation. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Returning to the council. Can I ask Councilmember Jimenez, does the resolution change then if we're no longer talking about unionization?
Yes, it does. You know, I, when we went to the Rules Committee, when we originally submitted the document, it said right to unionize.
Okay.
And then when we finally got in front of the Rules Committee, we actually had a replacement memo or supplemental memo, just changing the language. And so I'm not sure if it's reflective on the item as it relates, but that's in effect what it is, just supporting them as they go through a contract. So it isn't necessarily the right, supporting them in the right to unionize.
Do you know if there, how many employees in San Jose are affected?
Let me see if I can pull that up. Let's see.
We just did a little bit of research because we were trying to understand what all this was about. And what we found out was that there are only about 80 employees in all of Northern California that were affected by the unionization vote. And so they're the ones that it would be contract negotiated for.
Yeah, I don't have that number in front of me Mayor, but and I, you know, if we have some of the callers that are chimed in, I'm sure some of them can speak to that a little clearer.
Okay, if they have information, I welcome it. Let me explain why I'm asking. My understanding is this company's headquartered in San Francisco. There may be a handful of employees, as far as we can tell, 16 in the current company. And of that, some very small number will be within the group that's unionized recently. And I'm guessing just by the ratio, it's probably, you know, in low single digits. I don't know much about the struggle, but I assume the NLRB has ruled, which meant that certainly the employees had a righteous claim to unionize and understand, support that right. But now they're in contract negotiations, again, about which I know virtually nothing. We have a council policy 0-11. And I just read, you know, the preface here, provide guidelines to the council's consideration and request for action upon a matter over which the city lacks jurisdiction or substantial influence. And to preserve public time, resources, and deliberation for those matters upon which the council's decisions have direct and concrete consequences for the city. And then acknowledges, of course, fully realizing and supporting the fundamental right of every citizen in the city to make, use, and opinions known. The policy of the council, the city of San Jose, that actions be restricted, issues that most directly impact. The policy of this, the council, the city of San Jose, that actions be restricted issues that most directly impact, affect the city of San Jose. And obviously in reference to those issues that the city actually has some jurisdiction and direct influence over. Then it mentions at the end, the council's held adopted policy for reasons of efficiency, judicialiousness, and improve the efficacy of this produced by the council. Now, this, this item is a very small, you know, this, if it were not for my questions, this item would take a couple of minutes. I, I'm mindful of that. And, and I don't, I don't blame anybody for speaking out as councilmembers and saying this is wrong. And, and obviously as we invest more of our time in learning about it and justice, it may be going on our community. But my concern is fundamentally, this is about a company that's not in our city relating decisions that we're not making, we have no real influence over. And it might affect at most a single-digit number of employees we think may be in our city. And so what I'm concerned about is what this would set as precedent for lots of other things that would then be pulled in before the council for us to have extensive debate about, because inevitably these are issues that are going to involve disagreements, right? That's what every labor dispute is. Usually it's a disagreement. And require an awful lot of investigation and inquiry in an area where we simply don't have any influence directly in the outcome. And I'm pretty confident the folks at the bargaining table aren't that interested in what we think either. And so I, I would, you know, I'm going to vote no, simply on the very, and I don't expect anyone to join me on this, but I'm going to vote no simply because I think we need to adhere to council policy zero dash 11. Because it is, I, I think a very slippery slope to the point where we end up with 30 of these resolutions in front of us. And we've got a lot of really important work that we do have direct influence in, where our decisions do have direct impact. And our residents are depending on us to spend our time and focus on those issues where our decisions actually have a direct impact. And so for that reason, I'm not inclined to support the, the motion, although I know obviously very well intended. I appreciate the spirit and certainly support fair bargaining and support the right of employees to unionize. I'm glad they're unionized. I'd like to believe now the, the process will work its way out as it's supposed to through collective bargaining. In any event, any other comments? Councilman Pross?
Just a question for you, Mayor. Are you, are you mainly in disagreement to what the current resolution is because it has changed now from what it was considering the, the outcome of the NLRB?
No, not really. I mean, I, I honestly didn't understand a lot about this. I just, we read a little bit in the media, just tried to understand something about it. The fact that they've unionized is, tells me, okay, now they have power to collectively bargain. It's probably means we ought to butt out unless we know that there's something horribly egregious happening that we have some influence over in our own city. And in this case, it's not in our city. And, and I just don't see the direct impact that we have. I think any of us should individually speak out when we see those, those concerns, certainly.
Yeah. And, and, and look, I agree. I don't necessarily think it would be commonplace for us to come forward as contracts are negotiated unless, of course, right there, we, we have, I think, seen that there are some challenges in that. In this case, that was not how this resolution was, was sought out, right, to, to be. It was because of some conflict, which clearly was able to resolve itself before we were able to get forward a resolution in regards to the, the formality of, of the union. And so I would say, you know, I think I, I, I share an agreement, but I would also say that, you know, that, that's, in this case, it was a good outcome. And I don't think it's improper for us to take now what is a, you know, it's, it's literally two total pages, but in reality, it's, it's, you know, essentially one sentence of the, the actual resolution. So it's, it's a fairly small piece of, of, of work that I don't think is a, is a big, big ask. I also would say, even if it's a small portion of San Jose workers that are being impacted, I think it's important at times for us to collectively, if we want to make a stance. And I think in this case, that was the interest for myself and Councilmember Jimenez. We knew as well that if we wanted to be able to make a statement ourselves, we could simply do that. But in this case, we felt because of the, the challenges that they were having initially with that recognition, recognition of the union to be something that we would ask the full council for a resolution on. And so, you know, and now I think we can shift, which is what we've done, to simply a, a pretty fair and easy ask, which is just to negotiate a, a fair contract. So I'll move approval if we don't have a motion yet. Thanks.
I think you do, don't you? You have a motion from Councilman Jimenez?
Yes.
Yeah, I move, but he can say.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Yeah, and points well taken. Obviously, again, a small item, I, I would just encourage the Rules Committee to think about where the line does get drawn. Because I think there could be many dozens of these kinds of issues. And of course, we're not the adjudicatory body and we don't have the resources to understand the issues at a level they certainly deserve to be understood. So appreciate the points. All right, let's, let's vote on Councilman Jimenez's motion.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Owen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas? Yes. Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
LaCardo?
No. All right, item 3.6, strategies to combat hate crimes and violence against Asian American and Pacific Islanders. Let's go to members of the public who'd like to speak on this item. Any members of the public like to speak? 3.6, strategies to combat hate crimes and violence against members of our API community.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. I'm gonna try to give it a shot here to speak on this issue. I may say some things uncomfortable. Thanks for your patience and what I'm trying to practice and learn. The memo sounded really good that you're having meetings and counseling stuff and just places where people can gather and talk about the issue. I, I hope you'll be continuing that. I would really like to participate in that in the future. You know, there's a, there's a certain segment, a group of people who feel they can attack the community, basically, and, and prey upon these people. And they really got to get the message. They can't do that anymore. It's not very cool. And it does bring up issues of, you know, oh, thank you, by the way, that you have three language interpretations available for this meeting. And, and to, to always want to be working towards the language interpretation process, and that is not just an English-only system, I think can go a long way in, in, in addressing violence and just stupid thinking by people who feel they have some sort of power over other people. And so, yeah, I'm with 40 seconds left. Yeah, I'm interested how, how you will be addressing things and how we can all work together to address things. There is, there is an uncomfortable issue that I have that I think we have a, a problem addressing Asians in, in leadership roles. And I hope we can consider that. All of us can consider that. And it isn't just African Americans and Hispanic community. There's an Asian community that, that has a good participation process. And their leadership should be respected. I, I don't think it fully is. And we have to learn how to consider that and, and be open to that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's return to council. Councilmember Pross?
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you staff for your work on this, especially to our new Office of Racial Equity and the work by Zuma SCL and I believe was Heima Menath and Christopher Kembeis, I believe, Daniel Lazo. My apologies if I butchered anybody's names. And the many other city staff that responded to my memo back in February. I also want to thank all of our community-based organizations and partners who worked on hosting the listening sessions, which have helped to inform these proposed strategies. And obviously, it would be nice to say that these strategies were not needed. But as we continue to see across the country, our API community remains viciously under attack. It's heartbreaking to see so many of our API brothers and sisters, especially our elderly ones, being verbally or physically attacked and endangered on a daily basis. Certainly, we feel for them and can only imagine the fear that they are experiencing. I'm proud, though, that our city has responded from the work on the listening sessions to evaluate the needs and voices of the community and literally walking besides them in solidarity like our Japantown volunteers and to show that we are not deterred in our commitment to keep everyone safe. And I appreciate the proposed strategies and look forward to hearing the progress of these strategies in six months, as we've asked for at the Public Safety Finance and Strategic Support Committee, as included in my joint memo. And I did recently receive some communication from our Chinese community members about the recent action taken by the city of Antioch and they're apologizing for the treatment of specifically the Chinese community throughout their city's history. And as we know here in San Jose, and specifically downtown San Jose, there once stood several Chinatown's, including where the Fairmont currently sits. But they were burned down to the ground. And, and this is a tragic part of our city's history and specific attacks on the Chinese immigrants and community members. And, and so I do believe we could take some, some action. And so I wanted to, to ask if along with my motion, if it would be possible for asking the city manager and city attorney per our council policy zero dash 11, if staff can return with a council resolution acknowledging and apologizing for the loss of our historic Chinatowns and the intergenerational trauma, trauma that it has had on our Chinese community. Is that something I can ask for within motion?
Yes. I assume you're asking me, council member?
Yes, yourself or the city manager. Actually, maybe both. So thank you, Norm.
Wait, sure. We can, we can look at it and bring something back.
Okay.
That, that works, council member.
Okay, thank you. And so with that additional ask, I'll ask to, to move the memorandum jointly signed by myself, Councilmember Asparza, Councilmember Adenas, and additionally, the memo that Councilmember Asparza submitted on her own. That's the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Second.
Second, I believe, from Councilmember.
Second.
Councilmember Asparza, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilmember Peralas. And I apologize, actually, I'm having some technical issues, so I hope this is working. I'd like to thank Councilmember Peralas for his leadership, bringing, bringing the anti-API hate to the council both last year and again this year. And I'm very proud to join him and Councilmember Arenas in bringing forward our memo, which outlines the important next steps for us to take. And I wanted to talk a little bit about District Seven, where we have, the city has been working really hard to take actions to engage and form and protect Little Saigon and other neighborhoods in District Seven. Well aware of the fear that our community feels. And last year worked to secure the city's first Vietnamese-language community walking beats in Little Saigon to address the rise in crime and violence in the area. And since then, we have come out, both the police department as well as District Seven, and I and my staff have gone out to, to share hate crime information and have worked with the property owners there on how we can really make everyone, you know, really address the fears and make people feel safer. And so we've also held in-person outreach and engagement events at Little Saigon with SJPD. And I'd really like to thank the police department and our wonderful crime prevention staff for coming out and doing that, that work in the community. And then I wanted to speak to my own memo that I put forward and give some background on that. As the co-chair of the county's hate crime task force, it's critical, I think, that we coordinate as closely as possible with the work of the task force and the county, including the DA, the sheriff's office, and other law enforcement agencies, including our own SJPD. And so I wanted to mention the language in this. We will be the first city that adopts this resolution in the county. It is coming to the county, I think, next month, so in a couple of weeks. And this resolution, the language that is in my memo, was brought forward by the Asian Law Alliance. And the task force actually unanimously voted on this resolution and put it forward to the county regarding law enforcement training, community outreach, and support for AB 57. And this task force, which composes dozens of community leaders and stakeholders, representing the breadth of diversity of San Jose and Santa Clara County, overwhelmingly favored adopting this language. And it, we had a really interesting discussion about it. And I'd like to give a shout out to Richard Konda from the Asian Law Alliance for, for bringing this forward. One of the things that we've learned in this task force is that all of our communities of color have faced an increase in hate crimes over the past four years. And we have studied the language that has been used nationally, the national rhetoric that is used. It's been studied and documented that, you know, when our former president gave a certain speech, then we could see the results of that. And to learn that words matter and everyone is paying the price. And I think it's really important that we come together to address racial hatred and xenophobia that really lie at the heart of all of this violence that we're seeing in our community. And so I'd just like to thank everyone for coming together, keeping everybody safe and healing together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I was having, sorry, I was having some technical issues just earlier. So I wanted to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Peralas and Councilmember Asparza, for their leadership in, in bringing this forward. And, and really in recognizing that this part of our community needs that recognition, that there's so much power and value in recognizing social injustices, the social, the racial inequities that the government has created systematically for many people, especially for our AAPI communities, not only here in California, but across the nation. We've seen it in the past. And we've seen how this past administration, particularly the president, has set up so that this, this racial hate can continue and the scapegoating of this community can continue. And it really saddens me that, that we see this number of crimes against our neighbors, because essentially they're really our neighbors. Because it could, it, it creates this, this community that is, that I feel in my heart is not ours. This is, this is not the community that I see in, and this is not the America that I long for. But in this resolution, I hope that we, this is a, a step towards creating what we would like to see here locally. And that is that recognition of, of, of our AAPI community and their suffering and their, the targeting that has been happening to them and to their loved ones. And so really, I just wanted to, to thank everybody for the work that they're doing, especially Councilmember Asparza, you are co-chair of the, the crimes, the crimes hate task force. And, and I know there's a lot of really great work happening in conjunction with that group. And so I look forward to seeing the, the leadership in, in that task force so that we can continue to combat this. As, so, so those are my comments, but I had one, one question because I wasn't sure how our Office of Race Inequality is, including our, our offices in the listening session, so that we can also share with our community these, these opportunities to contribute and, and also create some These these opportunities to contribute and and also create some healing for our community. And so I wanted to know. I think there's three more upcoming sessions from what I understand. How can we engage our community and and what? What is the, I guess, the role of the? The racial equity Office of Race and Equity in the listening sessions? As I think this is a really important piece for us to be a part of.
Good afternoon. Suri Ma Masia, Director of the Office of Racial Equity, and thank you for the question, Councilmember Adennis. So the Office of Racial Equity was a convenor. And early after the council directive came out, we convened organizations that are API-serving organizations. Who have the linguistic and the cultural capacity to engage community members directly in their language and in spaces where, you know, they they feel safe. So we were conveners. We also helped create basically a protocol, which is how do we want to set up these meetings? How can we co-host them? And so they, the community-based organizations really led the outreach and the marketing to very. To various pockets of San Jose's that were that were that represented. Basically, the API community specifically and in their language. So they did most of that, and I understand that there are. A couple more. Listening sessions that are scheduled to to be had, and I'm happy to work with the organizations to get more information out to the council offices. I haven't gotten confirmation on those dates yet, but happy to look back and.
Thank you. Councilmember Renus, did you want to?
I thought I was speaking, sorry, Mayor. Oops, I don't know how that happened. So. When. So one of the things that I was thinking about is, and that I have been advocating throughout the pandemic, is how do we engage our community? How do we bring? Our folks of very diverse backgrounds into the fold and into what. Learning more about their needs so that we can match them better and and integrate their voices. And so this is really important to me. I would really love to get those notices so that I can then also share this information to my community as. Some of you may know, we have a large. Indian community in my district. As well as Vietnamese. I know many of you have have a large, of course, councilmember Esparsa, a large Vietnamese community. And so. We have existing partners such as in neighborhood associations that allow us to spread the word among our communities and. And can add to the listening sessions. And so. I really strongly urge you to continue to see us as an opportunity to engage our community further. And as I, as I understand, it sounds like the the community-based organizations were the ones responsible for that engagement or for those listening sessions. But as a convenor, I hope that you can connect the council with with those folks so that it's one in, you know, the the process is one in the same. It doesn't matter whether who who's convening and who's. Doing the listening sessions. And so that would be my suggestion, and I hope to see some of those upcoming sessions so we can continue to participate and and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, Mayor, do you want to go to the one more member of the public who raised hand or?
Oh, thank you. Additional members of the community's raise their hand. Quinn Vaughn, welcome, Quinn.
Hi, I'm so sorry. Thank you for taking my comment. I sorry, I miraculously missed the opportunity to speak, even though I was watching. Anyway, so just want to thank you, thank everyone, all the council members and the mayor for your support and and understanding. For the 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 trauma that our community is going through and. Just wanted to say that you, we have been doing listening sessions every two weeks and at the last minute, at the last week, a meeting last week. People had talked about. You know, how about instead of. Waiting for the streetlights, for more streetlights, how about giving them some like motion sensor lights? So that the houses that are kind of away tucked away from the streetlights, they can have some support. So when they see the, you know, light coming up. That they they feel better. And they have also raised the interest in meeting with law enforcement, both from the city and the county to understand their their rights. And what the city can do and explore the options. I also want to say that. I welcome the opportunity to work with the city and really look forward to. Build ongoing dialogues with the government, with the law enforcement, the city council and all that. And. There's one more thing I wanted to say. Oh, yes, VAC, please. Bring us back to VAC because that would help us tremendously in terms of, you know. Lowering, addressing the the trauma, the depression, the frustration, the despair, all of that is is skyrocketing right now. And I did manage to show them the Balancing Act, the Budget App, and they really liked it. They really enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Quinn. Thank you for all you do in the community, and I believe VAC is going to get open just as soon as we're. Closing down the vaccination operations there. David, is that right?
Sorry, Mayor, I believe that's accurate. I don't have an exact date on that.
Okay, I know it's happening sometimes.
This is Maya. Yeah, you're right, Mayor.
Great. Okay, there was another person in the community had their hand raised, but they put their hand down. There it is. Gabriela Garson Guta.
Hi, I apologize. I was having trouble with raising my hand. My name is Gabriela. I'm with the Asian Law Alliance. And we just wanted to say that we have looked over the memo and we totally agree with everything. It's great to see some action being taken forward beyond a resolution and put the strategies in place. One recommendation that we would like to also add for the strategies is making sure that there's a central mental health hotline for and mental health support for our community members. Who are suffering from hate crimes and from discrimination because it is a very unique experience and that was a problem that we've actually run into when people have called us. Reporting discrimination or a hate crime or being called names. So that was just the only thing we wanted to add, but other than that, thank you so much, and that is all.
Thank you. All right, let's come back to our council now. Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. Just like I'm sure all of us do, you, our office has been contacted by residents. Who have been uncomfortable and felt unsafe during the past few months in our community. Nobody should ever feel threatened living here, and I'm proud of the tremendous diversity and tolerance that are the bedrock values of San Jose. I do want to thank the Office of Racial Equity, other city staff and my fellow council members for taking the time to listen to the community. For coming forward with these recommendations. And I want to also recognize the efforts and work of many people in the API community themselves. And their organizations that have been working for months to provide training to community members, distribute safety kits to seniors and raise awareness. These recommendations are a start and I support them wholeheartedly, but we need to recognize that they're just the beginning. We need to be committed to taking concrete steps toward addressing the alarming surge in hate crimes we've seen over the last year. The work cannot stop here. We need to do more than listen to the community. We need to engage with the community and take meaningful action. We need to establish clear parameters for success so we can measure our progress and hold ourselves accountable. With hate crimes escalating across many of our communities, we need tangible, concrete actions. And now we're even seeing additional hate crimes building against the Jewish community, and I'm concerned about. Similar kinds of situation where we're learning that words matter and how we discuss issues makes a big difference in how people are treated in our community. So we need to always be aware of that. In District Four, my staff and I have been working with the San Jose Police Department, the Crime Prevention Unit, community organizations and leaders on a number of solutions. We piloted a program we're calling the Safe Neighborhood Initiative. The first event was held two weeks ago and was a huge success. The goal of the Safe Neighbor Initiative is to include everyone from neighbors to law enforcement in collectively working to improve public safety. We want to give our residents the tools they need to stay safe, come to the aid of others who are threatened and be our eyes and ears in neighborhoods. So we had a big turnout a couple of weeks ago and we're working to certify thousands of residents across our district. And across the city through this program. We're holding our second event coming up in mid-June and we expect it to be a larger version of the same event we did last month. We're also walking around shopping centers such as Pacific Rim Plaza to build relationships with business owners and let them know how they can reach out when they have concerns for their safety and for their. Community. And I want to thank Chief Mada for participating in both of these initiatives. He was there for our Safe Neighbor kickoff and and spoke and interacted with members of our community. Also walked around the a couple of our shopping centers with us to introduce ourselves to businesses there. So again, I support the recommendations in this motion as well as the recommendations. And the recommendations that were in all the memos that are that are part of the motion. And it's a great start, and I hope that we'll continue to work together in the coming weeks to translate these into concrete action and meaningful progress. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, and thank you for all of the words of my colleagues. Thank you in particular to Councilmember Peralis for your leadership on this issue. Couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, we held a rally in support of our AAPI community and against Asian hate. But that was just a rally. That was no action. That was words. This is going to the next step, and I'm really pleased to see this. Over the weekend, I spent the weekend in Texas with my brother and his wife, who is from Malaysia. To celebrate his, their son, my nephew's graduation from high school. There, he's biracial. My sister-in-law is Chinese. And she told me stories that I had not heard before of how she was. Targeted because of her race by very many different peoples within the the Texas, the community that she lives in. I actually was surprised to hear it because she lives in a community that you don't expect that to. She's surrounded by diversity. So I'm I'm appalled by that. I'm hurt by that. I'm. No one should be targeted because of their race, their gender, their color, their religion. We all need to work together and show love and support for each other. That's just words. So I'm really happy to see that we're moving forward with this recognition and forward with this resolution to take some action. And I also want to thank. Councilmember Peralis for her leadership on the Hate Crimes Task Force as the county level. I'm I'm grateful for the memos from Councilmember Peralis, Aranus and Esparsa and her following memo as well. Did I just say Task Force Aranus? Sorry, I meant Task Force Esparsa, but you all knew who I meant. At any rate, it's important to move forward. Thank you very much, and I absolutely with great gratitude will support this without hesitation.
Thank you, Councilmember. I want to thank councilmembers. Peralis, Esparsa and Aranus for the memorandum. I'm happy to support their recommendations. I had a couple of questions. One is, you know, I know we report hate crimes on annual basis on our website. I'm wondering, Chief Mada, Chief Washmore, anyone who could respond? Do we have any data for just the first four or five months here of this year? See how we're doing on hate crimes statistics?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you for the question. Yes, we have. Some preliminary statistics for January through March of this year. As you know, we report both hate crimes and hate crime incidents. Yeah, that's something that that we do. So. For January to March of twenty twenty twenty-one. We've had a total of twenty-one hate crimes that were reported. And a total of twenty hate incidents for a total of forty-one. And. We can, I think, maybe Deputy Chief Washmore may have the. The stats for last year and how that compare. I know we're we're up slightly for that.
Yeah, I saw there was a huge spike last year. I'm just looking at the on the online data that you have there. There's. Looked like there were seventy-one hate crimes last year, just race alone. That's not counting religious, religion, sexual orientation or others. And I'm just wondering of the twenty-one or so, do you know roughly how many of those were related to race?
Yeah, I can try to answer that question. And you're correct, Mayor. If you look at the crimes against race for last year, year twenty twenty. Against crimes against race specifically was approximately seventy-nine point eight percent. So the bulk of the hate crimes. Were specific to race. And as the chief said, if you combine the hate crimes and hate incidences for this first quarter, January through March, we are looking at a total of forty-one. If you compare quarter to quarter, so if we compare our forty-one for January to March this year to last year, we had thirty-six. So we did see a slight increase if you're comparing quarter to quarter.
Yeah.
And then for this, this present year, of those forty-one incidences. Three of the twenty-one crimes were AAPI-related.
Okay.
And six of the twenty incidences were AAPI-related. So that's just kind of comparison.
Right. Thank you very much for all that.
Yeah.
For that additional information. So three API crimes crimes against members of our API community and. Another six incidents. And and there shouldn't be any. One is too many. I think we all agree. I raise this for a couple of reasons. One is, I I know. That reporting is traditionally a challenge. We we think these are under-reported crimes. And I know PD is involved in efforts. For example, to reach out to businesses to identify safe places where people can report. Are you seeing any progress from those efforts in terms of trying to induce more complete reporting? Not sure if there's any way we know, but.
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, you're right. There's, that's hard to track, but we've been doing, as has been mentioned by our council members. Variety of outreach efforts through our crime prevention to educate our community on how to report. And and the distinction between both the hate crime incidents and and the hate crimes. And in the hopes that. We would increase reporting like like any other type of crime. You know, there's fear or. Our committee isn't aware of how to report, but that's what we've been doing through our crime prevention. I know they've. Been out there aggressively partnering with members of the county and neighborhood associations and and. Areas consults as well to provide that education to our community so we can increase reporting and also to. Educate our community to spread awareness on how. To identify those type of or these types of incidents.
Thank you. So just looking at the annual data that's presented on the San Jose PD website, it's really apparent there was a significant increase sort of during the Trump era. No question that that. Likely incited a lot of behavior that. We certainly hadn't seen much in in our community before, at least not recently. And I think I appreciate very much PD's efforts to really try to encourage more reporting. I think it's equally important for us to communicate what's not happening, which is. You know, the 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 consequences of a hate crime are of course are horrible. And the impacts particularly to the individual who experiences that trauma. But I think it's also important to recognize the power that fear has. And for us to communicate that these are relatively rare incidents because I'm concerned. About the extent of the fear and how that affects the quality of lives of our residents and members of our Asian American community. Feel concerned about going outside to go shopping. You know, I think they ought to hear that, look, we have three reported crimes that we know of so far. In this year, so at least people have a good measure of sorts because I I am concerned that the fear may in fact inflict even greater harm. If if we're not all communicating well about this. So anyway, I I know that's a very difficult balance. I think, you know, it's one of those cases where two things can be true that. It's clearly happening in our community and we need to do more to encourage reporting. But also that that maybe some of the fear may in fact be driving a lot of. Behavior that is also reducing quality of life that. And maybe some of that fear would go away if if people knew all the facts. So anyway, I I just raise that as a. Something for us to consider. Councilmember Sparson.
You, Mayor, and and thank you for addressing fear in the community, and I think. That's. There's been a lot of, there have been a lot of grassroots efforts like with Japan Town Prepared to have residents come out and. And offer that visible community support because things like that really do matter. I did want to share and and at some point we can have a report out when the. There's still a lot more work to do with the Hate Crimes Task Force, but I did.
But I did want to share a little tidbit and wanted to thank the Asian Law Alliance for their important comments earlier. One of the issues that we've had a lot of discussion about is the difference between a hate crime and a hate incident, as you well know, and the fact that so many of both go unreported because people are tired. They get tired of all the ugly things. And I know I've experienced it myself. You know, you get tired of all the ugly things, and they don't want to call 911 to report it. And so there has been some discussion in the community on the task force about having another entity, another hotline that folks could call so that we could sort of more accurately represent what's actually happening in the community in order to start talking about it and start healing. And I think that's the intent behind the listening sessions as well. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Peralas, but I just wanted to share that because I think what you're saying about the fear and that fear has an impact is important. And the discussions about capturing what's really happening out in our neighborhoods and our city is something that we have more work to do, I think, as a community. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I appreciate that. And particularly as I think about so many seniors and the need for socialization at a time when people have been so severely isolated, this pandemic. Appreciate that sentiment. Councilmember Paul?
Yeah, Mayor, this is just in response to one of the community speakers, and I always spoke to mental health in the staff memo. But then reading the recommended strategy, number one, it says publish the county hotline number to report hate crimes. I wanted to see if we could also publish the county's behavioral health hotline number as well and just ask staff if you're comfortable with that change or addition, I should say.
Yeah, that's an easy ad. Councilmember will do that.
Okay. I guess I'll ask that to be included, excuse me, into the motion. Thanks.
Okay. Councilperson, was your motion, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. I seconded it.
I asked myself, sorry.
Yeah, you asked yourself. I just wanted to have a quick clarification. The behavioral health number, that's the public hotline, right, that any resident can call? Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you. That's it. Great ad.
Okay, we have a motion then. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yeah.
Peralas?
Yes.
Owen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the final item in the afternoon, because I think all the other items need to be heard at 6 o'clock, is the land use consent item, which is 10.1A. Is there a motion on that item?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second. And interestingly enough, we had agricultural zoning on Center Road. That's clearly from another day. We have one member of the community who'd like to speak. Speak, man.
Hi, I wanted to talk about this item in terms of your other two earlier items of senior housing and another housing, but this is agricultural permitting. So I guess I just wanted to say hi and that I wish I was living in San Jose earlier in my life and around San Jose things to be around such an item as this. And at least I can comment on agricultural land purchases and policies at this time. So thanks for at least for that, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yeah.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to open forum.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Point of order?
Councilmember?
Wasn't there an item on Title 16 in which you had a memo or did we?
It was a request for a deferral on orders of the day that.
Okay.
I'm back in duty.
Apologize. Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Beekman?
Hi, thank you. To speak, if you're having an open forum, thank you at this time. A short meeting today. Congratulations. I guess to round out, round up, you know, thinking of my past few weeks, I hope you're interested and we'll be continuing to think of proactive ideas with subsidy ideas and creative ideas where, you know, people of low income at this time really do not have to pay rate increases at all. And people who are, you know, of a higher income, they can afford rate increases. Whereas people of low income have more trouble. The subsidy process can easily take care of low-income people at this time. And I hope you can develop really creative, proactive, and open ways to describe these policy ideas to the public in the near future. About affordable housing issues, there's a bit of a thing going on about how to create market rate housing at this time and feel like we have a regular economy and things are all normal and regular. But we were really working on affordable housing ideas before COVID-19, and that should be a part of our regular future. And, you know, most affordable housing is about at market rate level at this point. And we really have to consider what can really house people, people who have trouble getting housing. That has to be, you know, brought back to our thought process again. And just a thank you in all the work you've been doing with Reimagine Ideas. It's been quite a process right now. I think something really, really important can be developed right now. And I'm obviously going to keep quiet on how I talk about it and let that mellow out. And just good luck in what we can really develop at this time. I think it could be important and special and work with the entire Bay Area, which is what you've been asking for. And good luck in all of our efforts at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the meeting's adjourned until 6 o'clock.